Okay. There you go.
Thank you, Jamie.
Welcome.
Do we know how to, do we know how to start a new one if this goes south?
Awesome.
Yeah.
I wouldn't stay.
Like, we know how to shut this off.
We do that, okay.
Yeah, there's a button that says like, end meeting for all, and then it'll.
I'm just gonna pick up the computer and slam it on the ground.
That, that works too.
I've never done anything.
Yeah.
One of us, you know.
Pretty good. All right, thanks. Happy meeting, guys.
Well, good mornings. Good evening, bar. Call this meeting order, school setting me, county. Order commissioners, it's Thursday, eight thirty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Um, I would like to wait a couple of minutes with, um, this conversation. It's a, it's a. Right, I think it's. Let's pause that, that conversation. Eric, uh. As you're all aware, we're going through our goal setting this week. As I've mentioned previously, I've discussed with all of our tenants. The goal of identifying for services for each apartment. Chat with Eric about that as well. If you have an opportunity. Uh, right now, might have been transitioned. John, I started to. Oh, and. But. They had. Eric has some direction, uh, they impact. It's like. Levels of experience. And get a jumpstart on that conversation, services, and come. Help Eric understand what the, what our goals and expectations are for these anonymous. So I wanted this morning to have an opportunity. Us as a group to have a conversation. To, to jumpstart that conversation. Sure. Or Eric, I'm saying, just, just. Uh, John. There are no yesterday. Start the conversation. Crystal and I asked Eric to put together a list of similar. Subject matters, his office covers. Can I? That's just. It'll give us a little bit of a, a framework and some, so understand all the different matters that Eric. Eric's office covers. Without board and office, we may get some. Or there's something missing. Have a conversation about that stuff. Or this deal like in terms of. Harrison over again, it's obvious. Their subject matters. That was the, uh, smart out. Zero side as much. Thanks, bye, but.
You have probably, yeah, thanks. So. What I have tried to do here is, uh. Describe broad categories of new services that we provide. And a portion of them is the. Along, uh, or criteria. How frequently our office comes in contact with the petition type of project. How urgent the project is when it arises. And the, I don't know, difficulty or workload or both when it does arise. I haven't listed the specific project. So just as an example. Basically, everyone wants to spam. Property transaction. That's not the type of thing that's included here. Rather be something like a broader category like property transactions. So. The tricky bit, I think, through this. Is that although there are a number of, uh. Projects which are comparatively rare, we don't, we don't run into them. Uh, generally speaking, those rare occurrences are either. Very urgent or require a great deal of time and effort. Each one of them. Just as an example, bottom of the second page. Uh, extreme risk protection orders. Um, we will be, at least, I will be ever been involved in. One such petition. They are rare. However, uh, when it didn't keep, it come up, uh, the urgency was extreme because. That was a petition arguing that someone's firearm should be, because they were in extreme risk, so for others. And so. There is a correlation, unfortunately, with the occurrence of any one of these, uh, rare events. With either a great deal of urgency or a great deal.
So do we, the county do that, or is that the court system?
No, no, if. If a petition is challenged. Uh, the court is going to hear the challenge. The county needs to actually front the venture.
So does the sheriff come to you and say, we have an individual and he has this firearm? Then you, you come up with the document? And then it is automatically challenging court, or the, or the family may be challenged? Who challenges you, I guess?
Um, so. In that instance, and again, it's only ever happened once, um, the sheriff's deputy filed the petition for student protection. Um, the gentleman to whom the petition. Ball. Lured out and filed a challenge to that.
Okay.
The sheriff's deputy did not feel equipped. To go to court. Defend. That petition, so. Thank you for all this. I'd say in that instance, this, this office is. I didn't see how. If something like that arises. The urgency of addressing this is quite serious. Yeah. Two people all the time with the items that are, which are not venue of the page. Annually. Well, part of that, I think, is if one of these projects does arise, these rare projects, just for example, what really. That's probably. Going to occupy at least one of us. Or majority of that. Period. That's. We. Publications. Just as. A proportion of individual projects, most of, I think you do, could be categorized as. That's. Sort of nature. And that required. This proportion. Uh, there are a few things which, um. Perhaps now that we're in a. Different posture, might. So every week, our county, uh, council department gets together and conducts a file review. Every now and again, a particular file in our office will come. Hold on the side, a portion of it to write her, John or Alex. What we do is we review the file and then we confirm with the, um, department. Subject file that says it's a contract with health department. Um, sometimes that review doesn't take very long. You just say, okay, by the way, help department, uh, you have this contract and it expires in four months. Do you want to submit it to be renewed? Depending on the file, it may require a great deal more time and effort, but. Uh, that is a redundant system that this is, uh, the county has kept in place for years. Basically to ensure, to protect, ensure that, uh, things like renewals of contracts, uh, expiration of contracts. Updates to contact information don't get overlooked. Redundancy is a good thing. There is an opportunity cost for that. Each individual file review, uh, being by itself, take a little small amount of time. The entire process. Uh, aggregates to a large devotion for time. So one possibility is that our office just. After a certain period of time says, we're not doing file reviews. Our bits, you need to take the lead on this. Not necessarily advocating for that, and if that is an option to be explored, that the department has really need to consult first, but that's possible. Um, another possibility is, um. Both John and I attend, um. All the meetings of the board commissioners or, obviously, the receptionist. Right there. Um. We tend, even if there may not be anything that either he or I are sending. Necessarily best. One possibility is that we make ourselves available. Say we're listening remotely in case of questions come up. But in the meanwhile, we can pay to ask. Two or three dollars every day to attend those meetings. Um. A great deal of. See here particularly matters are that I have to state as constants. Um. Somebody at the county needs to do that. Does not necessarily have to be our department. It has been our department. It might take a. Small time. Right? That's. That they necessarily need. Justice example for the practice of taxes. Not to be. And some departments, the civic board's office, the sheriff's office, they, they have a great deal of facilities to handle those. So. They generally do not consult with us unless there is sort of a tricky question. There's law. And. Other departments, perfectly happy to, uh, send them on a way. To be fair to them, that's the county's process. They're not going to be involved in that. But that might be something that. Trading. So. The consequence of something like that. And this is against. Is that because our office handles these requests so frequently, we are skilled in navigating these. Rather arcane. And so because we have that facility, very processed them. Perhaps we're swiftly than someone who say, I'm going to use cases and then the case doesn't get a lot of interest. He will have to then spend a great deal of time getting up to speed. This is just. So. That is a. Tradeoff that.
I have a question. So when you're talking about file review and public records. Are you putting weight on a department head that maybe doesn't have knowledge? You know what I'm trying to say? They don't.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, they don't really have the knowledge and are we maybe, I guess it's public records, so therefore they're entitled to it, but are we maybe putting too much of a weight on someone? Uh, or like you're talking about file review or contract review. Are, are you putting too much weight on that person who doesn't really have the knowledge to understand? The lea- the legal part of.
Uh, so with public records. I think that is. That is a. Very likely possible. Bio review, I would say then.
What about contracts?
That's part of file. My feeling is, if a department is responsible for a contract, they need to understand what is in the contract. Our review there is a red evidence. So we remind them that it's going to expire. If we notice something in that file. Let's say for example, we happen to notice that there's a paragraph that talks about. It's a health department file. We notice that there has been a change in the HIPAA law. That is not reflected in the contract because the contract signed for that law changed. Uh, part of the file review would then, then be, we could have that opportunity to say, oh, hey, help department, we have identified that there is this. Inconsistency between the state of law now and the term of the contract. Are you aware of that? Should we get about fixing it? It is, um, you know, two pairs buys and several. Um, but I would feel that if there is a department that has a contract. They need to be responsible for that contract.
And they should know that HIPAA law changed?
They may not know that that HIPAA law changed, but they can't say, well, it's not my responsibility to know this stuff.
They should know.
They should know. And, you know, and for instance, you know, the change to HIPAA law, that might be a bad example, but the expiration of the contract. That's. That is going to affect their department. Finer.
It's on them.
It's not going to affect finance on this. Both of us would need a second pair of eyes. Uh. But, a- and I'm not saying that, um, you know, redundancy is wrong, and I'm not trying to necessarily get rid of redundancy. There is. Certainly a benefit in having our own. There are also trade offs.
Yeah, I, I think it's, to me, it's inverted. I think that it's super important to have those contracts watched. And make sure that we don't, I, people are human and there can be huge, huge problems with those contracts with. Uh, loss of money, loss of. Lawsuits, all these different things. Where on the other hand, I think we need to really start looking at our public records rules. And I think. At this point, I'm really close to if it's not an attorney-client privilege. And it's easily re- released, I think we just release. I mean, that's what a lot of municipalities do and just cost to doing business and. It's just, you know.
And that is, that is what the county does. That, that is the county's policy.
But it goes through you.
Uh, not, no, actually, most of the directors' requests do not go through us. It is the tricky ones or the ones where the department is. Or the staff members don't know what to do. So just as an example, um, you know, I use community development as an example. So he comes up there and says. I'm going to use some reservations, uh, renovations on my house. Possibly building permit, give me a copy. That is public records request. And put to the staff, the front desk, do a different copy. Easy peasy. The problem with public records law. Is that they, is that it is structured to cover everything from something as mundane as what I just described to a request for. Each and every document of the county. Somebody comes up to, uh, let's say Sarah, and says, I want every single document in the county's custody. That is a valid public records request under the law. And that's the type of thing, and that's an absurd example. So. Um, that would come through our office because that would assist with coordinating. The compilation of documents, responding to the requests or according to statutory deadlines. Knowing what should, uh, be immediately released and what might qualify for. Protection. So, I mean. The idea that the county sits in a secret volcano there and just says, we're not releasing this. I, I, I know that is out of the public. Um, it is simply untrue. So. And, yeah, I, I, I agree with, I, I agree with. Why have potential, you know, there's also potential lawsuits. We need. We need stop for against. Big. Problem. Which depend on. So I, I, I thought, sorry, or how to, you know, I don't see a lesson. Working by period. I look at finding. I think that over time, there is maybe some opportunity to bring these things around. And I don't disagree that department hits contract. That's it. What else things they have, have a second set of eyes on. And, you know, if you look at. If you still. You know, and if I just don't see how that would work. I mean, saying, you gotta look through all contracts and points. Um, and they're all the name that the health. Everything. I, I just don't see how they. Well, ended, I don't see how they. I'm probably smelling. That. They don't have that. Arm is up to contract, but I, I just. I, you know, I think it's important to have a second set of eyes.
In a firewall to like.
Yeah.
And we need besides a second attorney, maybe a law clerk. That could get rid of some of this redundancy that keeps you guys. Focused on the big stuff and then a law clerk that can maybe. You know, but I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't really know Eric, but I mean, a law clerk that can maybe read. Some of this stuff that isn't quite as. You know what I'm saying? It's serious. I mean, is that maybe a way that we add another? Person like that. I mean, I know Alex is an assistant. I know she does an excellent job. But do we need someone that's? A halfway, I don't know how to explain it.
Yeah, interesting question. Um, so. One good thing about having, uh, a great deal of time and. Experience in this is that. We have an idea of which files can they come up. Uh, might be. And look swiftly, and which might require a. So either John or I. If we know this file comes up every single year and there's nothing, no changes to it. So Alex, would you just please review the file and make sure that we're remembering correctly? And if you find anything, let us know. And she's very good at that.
Okay.
Um, so, so in principle, what you're talking about, yes, very feasible. Um. Uh, and, and again, that's part of the, the advantage that, you know, I've been there so long, John's been there so long, that we already have that. Um, when somebody is, is hired, John is a successor. That person is probably going to want to, and need to spend more time to keep up to speed on these files. Uh, just to get that sort of clarity. I hadn't considered, you know, having sort of a part-time person in the office to. Triage files. That's an interesting thought and I, but I have to give that some contemplation.
I agree with Brian. I, I like him. Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. So just they can only have contract management software or something?
Yes, um, and we are in the process of, uh, you've probably heard from Christina, especially ERP.
Yes.
That is an effort by which, uh, to get a robust system.
Yes.
Right now, um. The road department has their own. And they have to because they have a different accounting process. Uh, the health department is, I understand, has their. Couldn't say how they're blessed. Our office has a file management software program. Uh. That, you know, puts things up on calendars. Records. As well.
So that's what you're talking about. When you say it comes up on the calendar, that you're saying there's, it's the ticker and, okay.
Yes, uh, but one of the goals of accounting through this new enterprise resource. System. Is to have that kind of. Us. So that. As I understand it. First generated, then you can enter a bunch of information into a series of databases. Uh, and so if. Patient evidence. Of people read, say. Just say, okay, I need to, uh, termination clause on top of there. So we are unfortunately not in a particularly. Advanced stage.
It's also. So. Making sure that we, as an organization, are entering that data correctly the first time and not having to do it. That's gonna take some time for the machine. My other question is, do you? Um, I'm gonna speak again. Pretty impressive, by the way. Um. Do you? Would you consider yourself more of a specialist or a generalist?
Oh, yes, asking a question, uh. There are a few topics that our office would need to have a very deep understanding, otherwise. We would be. Expected to have a big broad edition. So we could know just about enough to, if we had to get up to speed on a matter. But I would not say that we are experts. Simply as an example, somebody comes up to the county and files an injunctive lawsuit. Um. You're familiar with terms, you're familiar with the procedure. We don't often contend against an injunctive lawsuit. So. I mean, that is unfortunately the nature of. Position. I know some of the larger counties. Do you have bandwidth, do you have specialists, they have a educator in the office, they have one person that does not do. Uh, except think about. Vast majority of working. Staff. So.
And how many styles are you, like, taking care of? Top of column files or cases or?
Um, I don't know if we have a counter. Some, but we, we have organized them. Based on a few broad topics, generally speaking, we have a department, so we have a topic with road department. But, uh, sheriff's on. Some of those broad topics will have maybe two dozen different, uh. Files and some of them like human resources, like the sheriff's office will have. Some of those also have been closed, but we do keep them in case somebody brings something in.
So we're gonna change the conversation a little bit, but how many, would you call them open cases or? What do you do any given week? Like how many open items are you managing at a given?
Yeah, um, that is an excellent question. I don't. Some periods of time are busy here. At the counter here. Times like August, September, February, March. Um, I'm sure there is a way to do that. I, I have never.
How much do we source suspicious? Like you talked about land use, right?
Yeah.
And is that, I'll just go ahead and tell you why. It's because. Sometimes when there's turnover within a department, there comes the need to outsource, you know, with third parties specialist otherwise. And is that a way to increase capacity for your departments or?
Yeah, good question. Um, I have generally found that. It would be helpful to outsource discrete projects rather than say on the. So just as an example. The county receives and he has. It's a short timeframe on that. The consequences. Response to that complaint here, that might be something. Please take the song. Um, as opposed to say something. Going like. Well, just your file reviews, uh, as an example. I think that outsourcing individual discrete projects. Uh, is a better way to outsource. Simply because. It is easier for the outside council to give up to speed on a specific circumstance than it's a ongoing. However, there are. Consequences to outsourcing. I need someone who is interested and has the capacity to something. And sometimes a challenge, uh, if they have. Our department has a allocation of funds for outside counsel. County is not overly burdened with excess cash. Uh, they have a lot of obligations. Reserve is. Necessarily quite small. So we have to be judicious about what we. Seek to outsource and.
What if you put some of John's salary or something? At least in the short term. Will we decide if we're going to work for something else and give you some time?
That might be that necessity. There may be some complications with, uh, A role because the way the budget is set up, but I'm sure that could be.
So, so my other question. There's some hesitation about placing John.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, obviously. Super difficult to find good attorneys.
That, that's absolutely.
And so I, I don't think we should just settle for the first person. In, in, unless that first person is a great person. But I think we need to look at the long term of what we're doing. Where we're headed.
Has Megan indicated how she wants to try to fill this position? Is this? Leaving thing? She hasn't. You have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think the general practice in the county is for us to try internal. Strictly for this position, I don't, that would be necessarily optimal. Uh, I'm not opposed to it, but I think the only people qualified are either will be. Or some of the district attorney's office and I don't know if they're interested in that. Um, so.
Carrie probably killers.
You know, Frank, if I got into a fistfight with Carrie, there is no doubt.
I'm sorry I brought that up. That would be bad.
So I, I'm not opposed to an internal hiring process first. I just don't know if that would be optimal as a position. Um, so the county might just. I have, I have to admit not getting the time to. Job description. John's position, the current is. It's up to date. It's only a few years old, so it should be mostly good, but there may be some. Changes that. So that is on.
It was gone. No, Will, Will, quite frankly, you're not a laugh. So don't even try that.
Um, looking over this list. Is there anything that you think that perhaps our office?
Well, I know you're trying to use this speed up or stream rolling and all control thing. So are you still working on that?
Yes. Yes, um, that is another thing. We had a conversation about how. Make that process more efficient. I, uh, so that I am not.
And then here you have, it's in pre-club, which is a consultation on land use matters. I think John being our new community. Director, I think that should take a little weight off of that, even though it isn't pre-club. I think that John could really help you there.
Yeah, in, in fairness to the committee development department. They. Vast majority of. Questions that. There are times in which they either want the second opinion. Or there is some. Reason that it makes sense to get the lawyers involved, like they, for instance. That was such an all issues. Certainly don't, I don't want to. John, I just see the former lawyer. Lawyers are the worst lawyers sometimes, so obviously there's going to be some stuff that.
So how about we try also that? Well.
Is there anybody like a retired person that would come in on short term? Is there any? Someone like that?
I know it comes to be a new mind, but I, I think we could support that officer. Just Frank said.
Now, who I was thinking of is Yella that just, uh, quit. Carrie, she went down to Santa Clara and she came on because of her daughter. She had, like Carrie, because her daughter has. She's pretty bright. I just was wondering, I think if we were to talk to Carrie and see if she maybe would come on.
She was the, what was she?
But the reason she, I, I had quite a conversation. The reason that she had, where she has a wonderful daughter. Maybe that would be option because she wanted to continue her career, but she, she picked her family. So that might be an option. And it might be an option that. Think she's an excellent attorney. Yeah, but that might be just an option like you're talking about file reviews, things like that. That might be an option. I don't know that she would have to talk to.
You know, another option.
So are there any topics on this list?
Firm those up. Fireworks and stuff, I think. I think we put them in accordance with state code. I remember the work.
I think a lot of.
Maybe that'll start getting people more interested in the fleet manager. If they're on top of this, they know their own.
Well, and that should come out of their budget. They should be considering it.
Yeah.
Getting bids and really.
No.
They should be getting bids. It should be coming out of their budget. They should be accommodating for it. So yeah, totally. I agree.
And, you know, once they understand the full breadth of what is expected of them, they may start to be more interested.
Totally agree.
They'd be more interested in. These are, you spend quite a lot of time. Pretty much just, you know, black and white.
Well, and we just.
Be a procedure you go through.
And we just set up those limits about what they could, you know, we set up the limits and we updated the. What, you know, we just did all that. So really that's all been done. All black and white. And now they can go on from there. So, yeah, I agree.
I will say one thing, a relatively recent change. That's been a tremendous help to our department. Based on by our department. That was a tremendous. Now, which department is expecting their, their agenda matters. Get to Sarah. That is. Great help.
Other email addresses to that contract management software, like if these items were going to bite as finance contracts. Can those specific ones go to? Whoever has been assigned or delegated as that contract review, it's the director, right? Instead of. Your office having to funnel that information to the individual departments is their appetite for that.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow what you say, the email addresses.
So I have seen some contract management software with, I'm going to say, uh, email notification as opposed to just a calendar type notification. And so if. This specific contract, let's say the contract. Went directly to Christina when it was time to renew as opposed to having to go through people to go to Christina. Um, would that help or is there capability for that to happen?
Yeah, um, I, I sure hope that each department has a copy of their own contracts. So, um, when we reach out to the departments, uh, we usually do not send a copy of the contract itself. I hope any permanent.
Okay.
Sort of simply relying on the department. If there is interest from the department has of having that kind of transmission. As to it, the only thing that comes to me is we want to make sure we touch base with. Because every time we exchange email. Now that's going to add to the. Resources we need for our archiving purposes and. Some other files.
And, and I think they do have a, I think, accounts receivables and things. I think they. That, that's picked up a lot. So, you know, when I'm fed it to pay then. Look at the bills or receiving any of those. Things like that. I think they're. So it.
It was along the lines of how to. Put the contract review on the apartment as opposed to leaving. That was really important.
Yeah. I, I, but I, I go back to that workload that's put on them. It's not their forte. And, and so that's going to cost us, us problems. They're all. Right over limited time. So then they begin to fall behind on something else. So then they say, well, we've got to have help. So then we're hiring somebody to read it that is probably. Not at, at the level that they need to be because you can't afford to have that for that specific thing.
Uh, what, what I heard her say was more just giving them a tip, saying like, we need to get this done. So Eric's not having to. To. Say, hey, guys, we need to get this rolling, right?
Yeah.
Like, just like, hey, if we're, if you're having issues, Eric, with people getting back to you and. You having to be constantly on their case to say like, we need to get this contract done. Once they get that and start working on it, they obviously are still going to want to run it by Eric and make sure, I agree with you a hundred percent. That we want Eric to have eyes on it. But he shouldn't be having to personally email that person. This contract's coming up. I need you to, to initiate this so I can help you. And if there's some email that could give them one more. Prompt to, to start that process and then do it. And, you know, obviously. But I'm sure it can, you know, send them an email, send them an email. And then send Eric an email saying, well, this, this issue still hasn't been resolved. You know, we need to get this done. Yeah.
Uh, it's not an automated system, but yes.
Well, see, I, you just got to file the contract and then you read, read it over. I didn't get the, there was that back and forth.
Yes, uh.
Okay.
So. Part of our file review is the, you know, most important issues are of course expiration. And, uh, renewal dates. But depending on if they file, there may be some. Liberables that we. And, and I'm sure there is a way we can set up an automated system. I know. Stephen or Chelsea, but I, I just. Down, filling up our. Kind of else is not just all. Harlan, that's kind of. It's not very, but I, it's not very. Eric, to know all of the subject matter of help. Services. Harlan, I just make sure. Complications. Services described. Certain pitfalls. That's generally about that much.
Yeah.
And then there's not that much, such as BS, right? And, and, and a legality type of way. Some of, some of those O A G tracks. Right, a lot of contracts. Certainly some of our I G A's. I do, I agree with you that. I think it's not fair and I, I talked to. Talking to Amy about this, this conversation. All it's unfair to say all hundred.
I, I agree with you that part.
Look how many times. I mean, look how many times they've tried to slip things in there. We had that one. Control contract with fairgrounds where they were requiring us to be in. Where they could change things after we signed the contract.
So there are, I think, um, a few broad topics which. If you think about whether our office. The best or some. Have a new labor attorney. Taking up unique bargaining. One of our current unions. One of our super formed, but not yet finalized unions. That I'm working, uh, continuing to bargain upon third. I would like to. Sort of consult with him if I have questions about. Assuming we do get that contract signed, thereafter, I would like your blessing. Say that matters of. Engage him. Does not necessarily have to be for office, like, like. Prize, but. That is.
Yeah, and I think in the long run, he will save us. So money that we spend will come back in a circle. After yesterday, I was very impressed. He knows, he knows that wheelhouse.
Uh, duty grievances, um. Your very fortunate to have certain rhythms. They do often come out. If our. But. Second page about. About these two. That's something that has to be done. It does not necessarily have to be our department. I would like your blessing. Begging about having that at all. Or the reason I want to say that is, um. I. They will have. The information immediately at hand to actually. I have done it. I've had to go to H R and take this information. So. There's stuff there that maybe doesn't. Uh, and also. At least I, I think this is. Positioning that as our. Uh, was just adopted, so. They will not undertake this responsibility of the property. So. This thing about, so as for the meeting, I might. Blessing. Sometimes things get overlooked and it's a little bit obsessed, uh, until the due date. So. I had a. Subpoena. For the benefit of me. Earlier this week, uh, on the day that the response was due. It was, yes, it was not helped, um. And again, that sort of thing does happen, but I just, um, would like to. Maybe mention if you. Then departments ever get a subpoena and you are not certain that you can deal with it yourselves. Please get that to our office immediately, like the day you get it. As you may or may not know, there are two ways to contend with a subpoena. One of them. Has a narrow timeframe. Miss that timeframe, we have to use the other method, which is our thought or labor intensive. Um, in this case, I'd like to say, I think the county did not have anything that was worth writing over. So as far as where the documents are transmitted. We corresponded with the attorney subpoena sheriff's office. Um, about making some small redactions. He was a gentleman about it, so that was not a problem. So in this case, it was, it was, um. Bit of a surprise, but it was not a calamity. Um, the next time, you know, it might be a bigger.
May I ask? A lot of question, one of your personal earlier questions, you're talking about. Here are some of the fraud. Fraud subject matters that may make sense to be. Reassigned, but, um, you also mentioned there were a few. Areas that you are just going to be. Experts in, how, how would you describe or? List those three.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the ones that come immediately to mind are, uh, we have to be experts in, um. Real property tax foreclosure. Unfortunately, we only have to deal with that. Generally speaking, once each year. We have, it, it is something that the law requires the county to do, and if the county does not do it. Public contracting. In particular, how to avoid inadvertently violating the law. One of my. Department goals is to complete a public contracting training for the county staff members who are. Generally involved in. Larger purchases. That's going to be a great benefit to them and of course. A lot of harm. Um, public records and public meetings, um, as we're all aware, that has become. They can already be. Higher priority than it has been in the past. Um, and. Simply by necessity, uh, public employee discipline and termination. The county does not frequently need to be friends with, uh, terminations, at least again, compared to a lot of our sister jurisdictions. But there are a lot of perhaps weary there. It's helpful to have the department involved in those to see if we can issue spot. If we. Identify a problem and address it. And there may be an opportunity lost there, but it would be dramatically less the consequences that we. Yeah, sorry, that's a, yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I just didn't want to leave anything in because he was, when you passed out your copies, I want you to see there were extra copies, but below was a written, uh. Paper, so I want you to get that.
Oh.
So I just wanted you to make sure you passed out extra copies, but that was there, and I wanted you to be sure to see that. As I think you would be looking for.
I, I very likely would. How can I already read this stuff?
I just wanted you to be sure to get that back.
So just thinking, uh, a lot, I'm going to be a little vague, um, because we are in a meeting, but there are some projects, but I anticipate. Thinking blessings to farm out. Unfortunately, the county has. A gentleman who was squatting on some property. Uh, Louis and I took a site visit. We do not think that this gentleman is. In immediate danger. Did not appear that his, the property is, um. Structurally unsound, such that we would have to get him out for simply his own safety. Um, but. I'm thinking that. It might make sense to see if we can engage outside counsel if the day ever comes that we have to. Go through a process to remove. Now, those processes, uh. As you may or may not know, are weighted in favor of. And so. procedural steps. I'm, I'm hoping that we won't necessarily need to do that. Uh, the last two instances where county had squatters. Scholars and gentlemen, and we were able to get them out, uh, without going through the legal process. Quite fortunate there, that sooner or later.
If it longer you ignore the problem, doesn't it get greater? The problem?
Uh, having potentially, yes. So that is one thing that I'm. Kind of thinking it might make sense to seek outside counsel for, um. We do not want to initiate any kind of proceedings during the holidays, uh, generally speaking, of course, and juries do not like that, but. Past holidays now. Now that we have, uh. Human Resources Department, that's fully staff, uh, I'm hoping that our interactions. Um, on a number of different policy interpretations, county policy interpretations will. Us frequently. So that might be one project which simply. And. Quite unfortunately, it. Does not come across our desk as frequently. So I have a question.
Yeah.
So. And. You know. We, we can outsource, uh, those that. So how is that process? Are, do we? Seek out. A pool of. Folks and have a conversation with them, see if we. And partnership with them. Because I think that, that is. You know, everybody's basically. And, um, I'd get the backseat. And then make sure that we go get the backseat. More than we have.
Yeah. But how, how does, how do you see that process?
Yeah, good question. For something like this, um. Uh, uh, where we're talking about a physical occupation of space, I think it would make sense that the attorney be somewhere in the central Oregon region. Rather than say, you know, someone in Portland or somewhere. Chin or somewhere in Bakersfield. Um, I sort of envisioned that I would just pick up the phone and speak to an attorney who I, uh, think might be interested. Make that offer. Uh, they're going to send me an engagement letter. To give your view, um, and depending on the terms, we might. Sign it ourselves under our contract authority, talk a little about signing it, or bring it to the board of commissioners. And if they're not interested, take up the phone and call someone else. Um, I hadn't thought about setting up some kind of. Available attorneys that we have sort of. Needs arise. We have something similar for, say, the. Code compliance hearing officers or have a project or, um, that might be something to investigate.
What? What, what about a group of lawyers? That could, that could take some, you know, again, I. Well, for, you know, looking and trying to find somebody. But, you know. We've seen like H R position took us what? Almost a year to fill. And, and we don't have, you don't have the bandwidth and we don't have the time to just. Put everything on hold for a year. And so what if, what if we found, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure they have law firms that have. Kind of a group of people that do this for cities, counties. Bring them in and then you can just start. Shaving off things, you know.
I think in this case, we do need to unfold.
And then, and then, you know, I, I think maybe even. We can have a group conversation with them and, or you have a conversation with them, you go comfortable with them. And then we have a group and then we, because I'd like to have a conversation with them, make sure that. We all. Are in agreement, all four of us, five of us are in agreement that. Uh, this is the right kind of team and, and that we, we see them as a positive. Addition to our team. And then. You know, I think that would take a lot of pressure off, you know.
The only complication I see, and this is, this is not necessarily fatal. Um, is. If a project, a screen project comes up that might be jail to be fired out. Yes, is that we don't want to farm it out sooner rather than later. Timeframes have evolved. So. Getting this, um. This new resource up to speed will take some time and effort. And meanwhile, it might make sense to, um, you know, triage. And if we have these discrete projects come on. Act with greater dispatch. Um, but what you're talking about, I don't see any. Reason the county could pursue that. We may publish. A. I would want a word submitted, but we can publish a type of request for proposals for. Provide that work to, to legal assistance.
Yeah, could we not pick and choose and kind of see who we think would be a good fit? Well, I mean, we see, we, we search different firms from, I mean, I think word of mouth is always the best way to find. You know.
Is it kind of like the procurement. Uh, depending on the cost, uh, the dollar value. Maybe, um, although I don't think we're going to go close to that threshold, so. Right. That might be something we think about, um. You know, one of the key issues there is to understand. Not just on the county side, but also from the firm's side, what it is that. We in our office are doing, what it is that they in their office are doing. My preference would be if there is a project that we farm out, they are responsible for it whole ball. And some of the engagement letters that I have seen. Outside firms are very uncomfortable with that, that they. Will do legal research, they will do legal work, and then they will give it to the in-house counsel and say, okay, you finish it. And that is, I think, a recipe for disaster.
Yeah, what good is it for you to have to check all their work?
Yeah.
Well, liability. Yeah. We want to go back to them because they're the ones that made the mistake.
There's another. Project which I would like your blessing to. Devast myself of. Maybe not currently, but it's the regulations on the third page, the age, the elected official compensation committee. Again, that's something that has to happen. Our office has done it. Because somebody has to do it and we are someone. It does not necessarily have to be an attorney.
That you then will?
No, I think I would ask that it be HR finance.
I'm met.
It's actually a bit good.
Yeah.
When I would, I would talk, if we do find another firm. I would talk to him about doing those dog deals.
Great opportunity for young attorney.
Yeah.
Fight dogs?
It's an opportunity to learn.
Give for a judge.
Yeah.
One, one other, one I had a question on Eric. And I don't know what your desire for long and where, but it's been, there are a couple of bond related ones.
Yeah.
Those sound like they're rare, but also. I know we retain bond counsel in the past, I feel like my, my assumption is that it's very specialized.
Yeah.
Some expertise.
Yeah, when I. Typed up that bond levy, tax levy, I sort of envisioned. It's really too prospect. You're right, you know. Really, public entity. Bond levies, that is a very specialized field when we do outsource that. John, of course, drew the short straw, so he was working with Brian on that. And. Related documents for the Justice Center. That was necessarily tied into bond measures. And then every four years, there is of course. Historical societies, tax levy that comes up. And inevitably, our office does become involved in. Reviewing the material, trying to get it shape for inclusion and each other packet and. And others affect the voter's pamphlet and get it to the clerk's office prior to the expiration of. The measure date, so it does come up frequently. Obviously, it does come up periodically. But you're right, I mean, a lot of. A lot of the heavy lifting for tax levies or bond levies, if we should have them in the future, that would be something that.
It'll be my considerers farming out. And it's a little more difficult. But the enterprise zone agreements and managements.
You're going to be sitting up there with your feet on your.
Well, you know, I can.
Come on, Eric.
Still got to get something.
Just a smile, just one little smile.
I've been saying how it is that John's taking a new job because now I'm actually. And just. And I was doing.
And probably another one too is the enterprise zones, red zones. Type of thing, I think that some of that. I can see slap me well that. Maybe community development is a little more.
Yeah, I think that's a team effort. I think it'd be a team effort between community development and maybe John and Susan's office. Someone, someone already.
And it could be outside counsel too.
Yeah, I'd say. At least from a tracking standpoint. You know. When you Google app and. Don't be necessary.
That one? In principle, yes. I anticipate though. That when, if you have any sort of application or a new enterprise zone or an updated enterprise zone. System or red zone, real estate is going to come across our desk for review. The degree of our involvement, I think there'd be a lot of possibility there. So. Limited to just reviewing and saying, okay, well, you think this is legal. But we're not say necessarily responsible for negotiating terms, possibility that sort of. And, you know, be responsible for parties, arranging meetings, public meetings. Negotiating the potential terms, not just with the. Applicant, but also with business Oregon and catch. That co, that would be a tie. So in principle, yes, if you get those across the desk. Aren't falling, it would be quite modest or quite extreme.
And again, your processing of social gathering permit applications and mass gathering, that was all updated at planning commission and it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I envisioned that we would still be involved.
With liability and stuff.
Well, for the matter of. Unless that provision has been removed from the code and I. As. When someone applies for a social or mass gathering, particularly mass gathering. Us bonded place. And of course, that is probably something that our office can draft and negotiate. But a lot of the other aspects of that processing. But here that.
You know, we went through and we, we accommodated through the state and we have steps and we have all that.
Yeah, I remember the last one. Take somebody, she is that process. I formally take that out.
She should have had the last, should have been that wolf thing. Out there. I know it went off.
What's next steps?
Well, so I think I have some marching orders. There is interest in having our department investigate. Three things. First is to develop some, I'm going to use the term tool, some kind of tool of attorneys. Who might be available or. Long-term relationship with the county. Even if the individual projects are quite discreet. I think that will probably be a longer term project. Shorter term project is to investigate discrete projects which might need to be farmed out, like for instance, addressing. Potential squatter issue we have right now. That I think would make sense to act with a little bit more dispatch. And then as sort of an intermediary project, investigate finding a sort of part-time help counsel. On a relatively short-term basis, maybe not a permanent basis. To see if it makes sense to have them brought in for our office. A portion of the week. To assist with. I don't want to say the unimportant parts per job, but maybe the less. Less critical, but still kind of time-consuming portions of our job.
Maybe a flower.
And then maybe a fourth project is I put my head together with the IT department on some of the electronic automated responses. We talked about, you know, to find a way for our Clio software. Maybe be more efficient. And yes, if there's interest in farming out the dog cases, I will personally bring lots of champagne for each and every single one.
Just on the automation, Eric, Clio has a ton of great training. They may have given a specific tool.
We don't have a law school nearby, we get little baby senior. Law students.
Um, yeah. The county council's office used to have an internship program. For law students. If there's interest in reviving that, we can see about how to set that up. I think probably just taking that while that might be a longer term project. And my recollection is. Hopefully this doesn't sound dismissive. Because they were law students and they weren't licensed to practice law, they ended up being. A drain in time and resources rather than a pill, right? The, the program was set up in part because. There were interests in having training opportunities for people who. They maybe don't have a law school here, but they are from central Oregon, they want to learn how to practice law. So, you know, it was a public service. Specifically saying it was. It was. Not a system set up to promote efficiency.
So then let's, let's look at a little. Deeper. So we need an updated job description.
Yeah.
Is, is that something that instead of an excellent interview from John, then he can kind of work on a little bit of, since he was in that position? Kind of. Kind of arrange that.
You know, that's not a bad idea. Ask him if he could read his job description, see if it is up to date, see if he would suggest that.
Yeah, that'd be his excellent interview.
There you go. Yeah. Hard idea.
There you go.
So we get that going. And we can. Next step. Grouping. HR.
So I kind of want to circle back to. The course services conversation. So we heard Eric list out kind of four areas that his department needs to be experts in. I kind of want to. Make sure the board is in agreement that those are the four areas who should be. Probably should focus on being experts in anything else that's. Missing from that list and you don't necessarily have to have this right now, but I think. For me, like. Those four areas are.
Those four areas.
I did, it was real property right there.
Real property tax foreclosure, public contracting.
Yeah, I did.
Public records, public meetings, public employees.
I agree with that. And the real property foreclosures coming out pretty soon.
Well, fortunately, we have maybe another six months before we have.
Because we have to wait for.
It, it's all on a. I have to say also, she's not here to speak herself, but the county is quite fortunate to have Stacey run those tax foreclosures. Her files are immaculate. They have all the information that we need. If anyone has the challenges in that tax foreclosure process, we just have to pull up this paper and say, uh huh. Say Sarah did that, did it fourteen months ago, you're out of luck. We are quite fortunate and I, I personally am quite fortunate. To have her on that team because she makes. That process so much.
So one question on the public employees and. You find any comfort in that since we have a attorney that's going to represent. That that person will also be on for any of them.
Yeah, if we ever have a potential discipline or a union matter, yes, I think having that expertise can be tremendous. And. Quite adept at responding swiftly, which is. Quite welcome. For non. For non-union employee dis-matters. I don't know if this firm does that. So that might be something to investigate and see if, and sort of, sort of a. A backup.
I would, there's a lot more non-unionized employees in the county, so I think there is, there is a need to have county councils up there some to speed. Some of that, because it may not be practical.
And we do have Tamara at C I F. And we do have now an H R director, so we do have several other avenues. On the non-unionized to explore. So I do feel confident on those aspects at least, but we have other different avenues here. I do like Steve a lot. I really felt very good about yesterday, but we do have some other avenues.
Well, yeah, I mean, I.
I was just talking about to you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but I do think Steve would be really extremely important on our unit.
And I, and I leave that up to Eric. I just want him to feel like if he's got extra boots.
Yeah, definitely. Nice would be the super important for you, Eric.
Yes, I, I share your. Assessment of Mr. Schuback. I think he's created a very positive.
And even if you know the right thing, you're just having him say that's the right thing to do is a good. Good confidence builder.
So I guess I would like to ask you guys, if you some homework. These are broad topics, but if you do look here and say, I need more information about how this works, how the county comes with offices. All of them, and or if you say, yes, this is something I absolutely positively would like you to do more, no. This is not something that I really need to. It would be helpful for me to, to have that kind of feedback. I'm not necessarily asking. To divest from any of this, with the exception of the E O P and dog cases.
I was going to say, yes, we might want to swing back around on those dogs. I'm thinking twice.
Yes, I'm not necessarily with this, I'm not necessarily trying to divest myself of these, but if there are these things, there's something listed here. That you think really ought to be somewhere else, there's certainly a way to. On the other hand, if you look here and say, ah, Eric forgot to include something. And certainly. Open that back to this rather informal list.
I think you've done a very good job, Eric, and you've been very thorough.
I really appreciate you putting this together.
Commission, whenever he spoke about that, that conversation that we had yesterday. Regarding the need of the department directors to have feedback and for you to. Understand, you know, the pieces that they are contributing towards the county and as. Understand, you know, the pieces that they are contributing towards the county and as well as. The priorities by which they operate, that feeds directly into that conversation, so I know that. Probably understood that I wanted to articulate it so that way. And or, you know, it just kind of underscores it. And um, it's pretty phenomenal, all of the broad topics that I flat out don't understand, that he has to be a specialist in. Like I, I don't understand many of these, so kudos. Derek. And, and the staff, and one thing also that I heard, he and the district attorney. Um, specifically speak about is how important training is. Um, within their specific departments and making sure that their staff is kept up speed on. Specific items, so being able to give them areas of focus helps, in my opinion at least, maybe I'm wrong, but. Identify where they should focus all of that training, if you know, and which pieces they don't necessarily have to be as much of an expert in. So I hope that's the case, but.
I really appreciate you being at our meetings. Because with the scrutiny that we are going through at this present time, a lot of times I know the motion. But I appreciate that you articulate the motion in a very concise manner. So that it comes across and is transcribed, and I really appreciate that, Eric. Because therefore I know it's accurate and it goes into the record accurately, and that means a lot to me, and thank you very much.
Yeah, and I, I always want Eric to know that he, that we all have an open door policy. And I think. It's not a little load, it's a big load. That he's able to come forward and say, hey, I need some help here, um. What do you think if I, you know, someone's. So that I think that's important.
Particularly in the coming months, very much so, yes. You put a, a surrender big white flag down here, we'll recognize that we don't tell you, we'll send a few troops over.
Well, but, and I, I think it's unfair to say it's not a surrender. I know, I know, but I'm just saying, like, you're not, you're not expected, you know, you're not giving up, it's, it's. For one person to handle. You need to, you need to understand that and understand that we understand that, and we're not going to be offended if you need more help.
Whatever the SOS flag is, that's it, how's that?
Well, you can only dodge so many bullets.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody's fully aware of how much time. In my perspective, it would be sustained, um, so, so I, I want to make sure of your.
And that's why, you know, certainly we want to get the best person, that's something we want to sleep on for a while.
Yeah, I would echo that, um, John was a tremendous hire, um, and. I'm certainly hopeful that we'll be as lucky in that next recruitment, but I would rather have something. I would rather take longer to find someone who is at his caliber, rather than just hiring a short basis and get someone who is perhaps. And yes, I know there's, there's a consequence to that, but I think. And if, um, you guys treat John poorly as the development director, he's also looking to come back.
You're hoping he walks us back across the street, huh?
You know, I'm just kind of, I'm not willing to. Okay, um, so I think I have, um, some homework to do, I'm going to be meeting with Megan later this week and just talk about some of the. Um, issues which uh, affect our interactionals, Mayor Jones' successor, not replacement. It's not your place, but his successors recruitment will come up, so.
And I think you have a very good way of looking at it, that you're not anxiously grabbing the first cannon you ever walk through the door. I mean, that's good, like I said, any help you need.
Well, I appreciate that. So, all right, um, last thing I'll say is, um. Uh, I am. I do have the best staff of any department in entire county. Just John, but also Alex and for Alex. Uh, any success that I have.
We're going to get your successor, he's just as good.
Thank you, everyone.
So what is the plan?
Yeah, what's the next? I believe the next. May Christina and Galen and I are meeting at ten.
Does Galen know that? Should he came and wasn't sure, so he left. Do we stay, do we watch, we're not here, okay?
And then be reading being at one.
And then what happens at one?
So from one to three. One to three, we go back, we go back to the goals and we refine them. The, the ones we discussed.
The ones we talked about, yeah.
And budget committee will be here, so we'll have a little bit broader conversation. Make sure there are any changes. And if we agree to four, we're meeting with the chair. And the board at the time, the budget was about to ask for.
At the three o'clock, when there's evidence.
So, so one to three, we're talking about our goals and that, but when are we getting down to the actual numbers? Just talking.
Numbers, the numbers will. Finally, you're talking about the chair's office specifically.
What solutions are we coming up with, basically what I'm talking about?
Oh, we're gonna have, yeah, we're gonna, on a high level, we'll talk about that. Sheriff's office. Finance office. I saw these directions in terms of. I have some general ideas. Never attended this conversation.
So, so are we done with this meeting, so we can close it? The rest of this can leave.
Yes, and then we come back at one.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, when we close.